Before we do our closed items, I do want to welcome Dr. Eric Moon here. He's a new Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Dr. Whitney Rennella is now the Assistant Superintendent of HR. What do you call it? Administration. Thank you. I do want to welcome those two here tonight. They, um, we should have a full table, but Dr. Haymore is not here tonight, but we're finally back to where we were about a year and a half ago. Okay? Uh, we have motion. So I have a, um, motion to reconvene closed and related action items.
So move.
Certify. Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes, I, uh.
Action. We have a motion to approve personnel changes for July eighth, twenty twenty-five and the recommendations for coaching activities. Signing for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented and discussed.
Make a motion. A motion in a second. Any discussion on any of the personnel changes? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah.
Mr. Moon.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yeah.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
We have a motion to dismiss two EREP employees and recoup any funds paid for days not worked.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Um, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
Superintendent has some recommendations tonight.
Mr. Dawes, thank you. Uh, good evening, school members, um, staff and everybody that attends tonight. Um, just want to kind of speak. We had a vacancy at Assistant Principal position at Tunstall High School. Recently came available. Um, we, um, interviewed, um, several candidates, um, excellent candidate pool, um, recently. And from that interview portion, my recommendation this evening for Assistant Principal at Tunstall High School will be Mr. Christopher Kane Devivi. Um, just want to remind, uh, everyone about his requirement qualifications, rather. Mr. Devivi currently is the Assistant Principal at Chatham High School. Has been there for one year. Prior to that, he has had experience at Tunstall High School for sixteen years, um, as a health and PE teacher, a special education teacher, and of course, family life education teacher, uh, with alternative services. Did him at public schools for one year at, uh, Westwood and, uh, GW High School for one year for PE and health. Magnificent for four years of teacher for PE and health. He has a BS at Longwood University in Children's Education and Health and, um, a master's in education at the University of Lynchburg, Administration and Supervision. So would like to recommend Mr. Devivi for the position at Tunstall High School.
Have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
So from that, with the transfer of Mr. Devivi to this position, um, feel like we need to move quickly on that because school is just around the corner. So from this, um, pool, I would like to recommend Assistant Principal at Chatham High School to be Mr. Jason Entz. Mr. Entz is currently an agriculture teacher at Chatham High School, has been there for twenty-three years. In addition, he has served as summer school administrator. Mr. Entz has a BS in agriculture education in VTEC. And also has a master's degree in science and educational leadership with the concentration administration supervision from Arkansas State University. So would like to recommend Mr. Jason Entz to fill the position of Assistant Principal at Chatham High School.
Have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yeah.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes.
I see you sitting back there. Do you realize what you get into?
To see what happens with it.
Well, I know you've been a, a, a long-term person at Chatham. I'm sure you'll do a great job for us and congratulations. Welcome aboard. Ms. Entrepot, I think you're getting a, a fine replacement. Anything you'd like to add, right here?
No, I, Mr. Entz, we're looking forward to having you there. Mr. Entz, uh, Mr. Um, Devivi did a fine job there, um, working at your leadership, Mr. Entrepot. You got a fine administrative team there. And I know that you've got a new addition with, um, Mr. Entz. He'll do a fine job. Looking forward to working in this position and growing in X capacity.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayhew, do we have any additions to the, uh, the agenda? I know we have one we need to remove.
Sure. From the consent agenda, I would recommend we remove the agreement for parks and rec.
Okay.
And then I would recommend that we add the volunteer visitor protocol update under new business of a new business title.
We have a motion to approve agenda with the two changes.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Uh, any discussion on those? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yeah.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. Any discussion on any of the items? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. We'll move on to public presentations. Dr. Rennella, do you see any new? Where does she go? Oh, there you go. I'm sorry.
Mr. Entz, we welcome you to your new position.
Okay.
Other than that, no sir.
Thank you. PEA, tell, how you doing this evening?
Tired. How are you?
Hot. Not too bad here, but I tell you, it's been miserable outside the last week.
So, uh, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. Um, there is a PEA, uh, items for consideration memo that I would like to provide to Mr. Minshew. Uh, for review so we can meet under the agreement for many representation, lobby day representation, uh, participation in training days, uh, staff development for the upcoming school year. Um, last month at the school board meeting, there was a mention of a thousand fourteen thousand dollars that appears on the agenda that we'll get to that, but, uh, we were just looking for some clarity. Uh, if this was, um, uh, where the money was filmed, you know, what the money could be used for, what stipulations come with it based on, I'm sorry?
I, I was asking him if that was a carryover. I think it is, yeah.
Um, uh, based on the funding sources or if it's a one-time occurrence, uh, just looking for some clarity specifically what this money could or will be used for or when, uh, the county has needs like, uh, tech upgrades, offsetting the cost of improved, uh, health insurance increases. Vehicle replacements, uh, most importantly, raising the lowest end of employee pay to be more competitive, uh, to aid in the recruitment and retention of bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and teachers aides. Um, and then lastly, in regards to SOQ, the standards of quality, uh, schools like Union Hall are heralded as, uh, some of the best learning environments in PCS. This is due to quality work environments fostered by smaller classroom sizes. Uh, the same to be said for Mount Airy, Hurt, so on, any of our smaller schools. Uh, I would implore you to consider, excuse me, using the aforementioned funds to recruit and fully staff all the schools as it currently stands. So we find some streams, have multiple classrooms. Recruiting teachers, filling all the vacancies, um, that are available, uh, currently on the website. There are vacancies that we have to fill, uh, as we should, and those positions that may have been eliminated in the past that need to be re-implemented. Uh, we in education, we're all aware that with smaller class sizes, uh, teachers are happier, uh, and more effective. Students learn better and discipline problems decrease across the board. It's just a better suited environment for learning with fully staffed schools. Uh, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Did, was you able to see the carryover funds where, where each category was carried over?
No, I, I, I haven't seen.
It's on the website, right? It's on Board Docs, right, Ms. Worley?
Okay.
So, so every, every year we have carryover funds. Most of it's probably construction. Uh, it's, it's listed. Another big one is textbook, right? There's always another big one. All, every bit of that money is, is in Board Docs as to what, what it's being held for and what it's being used for. So it's not any extra money there. The problem with us is we get money year to year. And because construction doesn't always end July the thirtieth, it carries over through the summer. We have to carry those funds over to pay for it. So since we doing construction things now more than, than we have done in the past, our number for carryover has been larger the last, what, two or three years, Ms. Worley, I think, last couple, three years. It's usually a, a small number, but the last few years it's been a very large number. The, the, the thing that makes it look odd is that carryover then becomes part of next year's budget. So it, it inflates next year's, artificially inflates next year's budget. Because it's really money trying to be spent in this year that didn't make it by July one.
Right. Perfect. And that's the type of clarity we were looking for.
Yeah. And that, and that's, and, and every, every dime's accounted for in this list. So if you want to go to that and look at it, it, it's, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of misleading to some degree if you're not familiar with it. But, but it is. They do have to kind of, one of the things we have to do is we can't carry that money over unless the Board of Supervisors approves for us to do it. So in, tonight we'll approve this, send it to them for them to approve to carry it over. And it's sent to them line item by line item because that's how they approve our budget, is line item by line item. They just don't say, here, here's ten million dollars that you was. They say, here's ten million dollars, but you gotta spend a million here and two here and one, you know? So this goes to them line item. And, and I'm sure it's probably, you asking to move some money from one category to another, right? You know, we do that every year too because you can't always anticipate what something's going to cost. So we're usually open one and under another one. So we have to ask them to move categories on it because they approve it by line.
And that'll be reflected in the document.
That'll be reflected in, it's, it's two documents in Board Docs. One of them is the carryover. The other one is the document that shows that the move it, the realignment.
That's the clarification we need to make, sir.
Anybody else have any questions on any of how that works? Now that we're gonna go to that, we're gonna, um, we'll move to staff committee reports, year-end budget report, priority expenditures, and update for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Cause Worley, if you can add more to what I just said, if I'm off a little bit, please clarify.
Good evening. I'm a little confused myself on the two different categories on the staff committee and the new business. So what we're actually going to do right now is go through the, um, our year-end report for June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And Ms. Hancock, is that I did not look to see what was posted where, but do you have your revenue, expenditure, and fund balance report?
They're both posted under new business.
Under new business. Well, this is the report that will, um, explain end of year. So we're just going to go over that now if that is okay with everybody.
Yeah, it's fine. It is under new business, but it's only under new business because we have to approve it to send it up. We have to approve it to send it up. So you, you can explain it then. We don't have to do it then. It's final.
Thank you very much. So, um, we did collect a hundred and forty million dollars this year. That was what was, uh, through the school system. It's broken down by category there for you. Sales tax, state, federal, um, the local appropriation, and then other funds. I do want to point out that our local appropriation for twenty-four, twenty-five, excuse me, can no longer see. You can see some of the numbers, not all of them, um, was twenty-four million, six hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. So I did go in today just to double check. Um, we got our final entitlement, um, numbers from the state in about the middle of June. And so we ended with the, um, minimum amount that the local governing body had to give us this past year so we could maintain all our programs, keep all of our state funds, was twenty-four billion, one hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. So we were funded last year one point eight nine eight percent above the minimum required local effort. We have not been that low in many, many years. So although we do have a very large carryover, um, there's really no money in there that the county would be able to, uh, to take back from the school system because it's just not there. You know, we have to have all of that local appropriation in order to, um, meet, you know, what we need for our state funds in order for us to keep those funds and be able to spend them. Okay? So just wanted to, to bring that out. So we did.
Instead of being, what, what was six or eight percent of it? We came in at zero, right? Basically.
Our ADM was a little slightly higher, um, at the beginning of the year, um, of what we budgeted for.
Yeah.
And, um, we just had a little more money. And that's why, that's how we ended. We knew it was going to be very close. I originally thought two to three percent. Very shocked today when I actually made the calculation. And I have already shared that with, um, with the finance office at the Kelly, as well as the dollar amount that we're carrying over. So let's just look at some of the designated carryover funds really quickly. There are several grants. Um, these are mostly state funds. We received that money upfront, so it's not a reimbursable grant. Uh, but when we receive that money, we have to spend it on those programs. The largest one is the all-in funding, um, that is spent through instruction. We have a little over two million dollars left. That money came in, in June of twenty-three. What is this, twenty-four, twenty-five? June of twenty-four. And so we had this past year and the upcoming year to actually spend those funds. So we have to spend that in the upcoming year. Um, we have money in there for the bonus payment. We did, right at the end of June, we received the state share of the bonus. So we had to match that, um, to be able to pay all of our employees. So we were carrying that money over as well. That will be paid in August. Um, there are a number of construction projects. You can see the town elementary sewer. We are just about to finish the Stoney Mill Elementary HVAC project. We carried over about one point four million last year. So I think we're just down to some. A little over two hundred thousand dollars there. Um, the welding, we carried over money last year, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for that project at PCTC. And, um, that bid did come in a little over eight hundred thousand. And we just started not too long ago. And, um, so we have about seven hundred forty-two thousand to carry over for that. Um, there are some grants there. Roofing projects, you can see Union Hall, Mount Airy, school board office, bus shop, and the metal roofs on middle schools. Um, I just turned in over five hundred thousand dollars of invoices today for some of these projects. Um, the only one that we not started, um, is Mount Airy. But, um, we did have, we were able to identify funds, so we will be doing that next summer. Um, replacement vehicles, you can see there, we've been carrying over money a couple of years for vehicles, mainly because we've not been able to order, um, what we want. We have some help now with Mr. Barr. So between him, Mr. Hudson, and myself, um, we will get our vehicles ordered, um, this summer so we can start, um, receiving those. And we're also going to buy some used buses as well. Um, and so we have money in there for that. Um, I, I believe the air went out in the ECC auditorium, so that needs to be replaced. Um, you can see our Virginia preschool program. We have quite a large carryover there, about seven hundred thousand dollars. We are, every year we are bringing more and more students in, so we are making some changes this year. Um, we are taking over the Title I to preschools that we have. We're running those because so many changes are happening with our Title I funds. Um, so we're making some changes in that area to start, um, spending more of, of those funds. Um, textbooks, three point one million dollars. Is it math or we? Math. Yes. So that will take, um, a large chunk of that. Um, and then you can see some things for training rooms. Um, we still have a little bit of money to carry over for the maintenance warehouse that we purchased on Woodlawn. Um, a couple of more, um, things to be done there. Then you can just see some ongoing maintenance and IT projects. You see, we have money in for replacing the HVAC here in this office. That is something that's been needed for quite some time, so. Um, and then we are, have some money in there for Chromebook replacements. You know, we bought a lot of Chromebooks. We got over two million dollars from the county, um, in what, twenty?
Twenty.
Um, and then I think we put another million or so in there. So those are needing to be replaced. We're having some major issues with those. And I actually need more money than we have here to replace those. So in a nutshell, that is where all the carryover funds are. Um, the majority of all of it you can see is, is state funded. Yeah, we're carrying. Any questions on any of that? There are no updates at this time on twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, finally, we're at the July board meeting, but that budget was adopted before the end of the year. We were able to, um, roll that in and have that put in school here. So. Any other questions on that?
Anybody have any other questions, Ms. Worley, on any of this? Clear as mud. Ms. Worley, you picking me up now? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Worley. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on any of the desk reports remaining? It's, uh, floor desk reports. If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's item.
I'd like to begin with some good news about our schools. In some of this, I'll just, just do very small remarks because I think more information will come in terms of recognition. But I do want to just mention, you know, we did, um, our educated year, that will be recognized at a later point. But I do want to mention publicly, so our second runner-up for the school division was Amanda Riley, Chatham High School. Your first runner-up was Savannah Cruz at Kentucky Elementary School. In the educated year was Kate Wells from Tunstall Middle School. And that event was held on May twenty-ninth. I mentioned it before, but I didn't want to mention it publicly, and we'll have, uh, to recognize those individuals at a later time. May twenty-second, I didn't have a chance to do this at last meeting, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of this if you did not know. We had a fourth grade teacher, Veronica Marios of Chatham Elementary School. She received a special surprise from Virginia Lottery's Thank a Teacher Program, and she did not know about this. Someone nominated her. So in conjunction with Teacher Appreciation Week, she, she received a two thousand five hundred dollar award on the last day of school. She was only one of four teachers across the Commonwealth who was randomly selected for the award. So her, uh, it was really nice. She was very surprised. It was very nice, um, acknowledgement for her. Piedmont Regional Governor's School held their, um, their program, um, June sixteenth through June twenty-sixth for grades five through seven of both these weeks. And very engaging programs there, excellent instructors there, Ms. Petty, Mr. Hairston, um, and the gifted regional teachers all coordinated that. And at the end of the, end of the, um, event on June twenty-sixth, they did a production of Aladdin. And they did an outstanding, I was, they had those kids for just ten days, and they were able to pull that, uh, pull it off. And Ms. Elizabeth Lee, who was the chorus teacher there, um, uh, working with, um, band director and some staff there, Mr. April Lee did a, I, I was just impressed by their voices and how they could pull that off so quickly. So, very, very nice job. Um, also, we do have some good news about Gretton Elementary School. They participated in National Beta and, uh, got some awards there. I think that'll be acknowledged later. And Tunstall High School also had National Beta. It had several students who need, they're, they're going to be acknowledged at a later time as well. And JRTC cadets participated in their JCLC field camp the week of June sixteenth. And that's, they do that every year. And, um, but I did want to note that we had one particular senior there. Um, her name was Cherish Atkins. She was earned the top cadet award at the JCLC camp. And there was other school divisions there, and then she, you know, got that award at a terrific event. So that was good to acknowledge her on that.
What school was she from?
Tunstall High School. Tunstall High School, I'm sorry. Um, just want to get some, this, Mr. Hudson gave us a very, um, gave me a very comprehensive list about updates on capital improvement projects. So maybe that gives them clarity too, um, for everybody in terms of how this money gets, you know, carried over in addition to. So we have solar power, um, that is, uh, the sole plans for Chatham Elementary, Gretton A L Southside, Stoney Mill, and Career Tech Center. Kentucky is complete, and the startup should be in the next couple of weeks. And Southside is next to be installed. Security vestibules, all the original vestibules and corridors are complete and operational except for a couple of punchless items. We're still working on getting some equipment and some things to get those straight, but we, we're working on that. The Mount Airy gym corridor is designed change so they can be all outside, and we will not have to get into the library. This should be launched in the next few weeks. Southside HVAC windows, that installation is taking place, summer prep for the HVAC system. That's going to be a two-phase project. Correct, Mr. Hudson? Southside?
South, there'll be two phases.
Right. Right. So they're working on that, working real hard to get that done. Let's see. Union Hall HVAC windows, we will start the school year with old windows units still in place and temporary cooling in the office and libraries. And then that's going to be a one-phase project, I believe, is how that's working. Right. Kentucky classroom edition, the grading for the building site is complete. General contractor is starting to build footings. Um, and so we will, we do, we'll know we'll probably do a new track pattern there for apparently, um, but that plan is complete, that project in June, uh, July of twenty twenty-six. Um, we, we're going to work through that, work through that. PCTC welding, exhaust, and ventilation system. If you hadn't had the opportunity to go by there, there is work being done. There's also a lot of work that students have been ready to do too. It's a very nice job. If you get a chance to go by there, the way they've done that, it's a really, really, it's a neat way of going to go through each, each, each one of those systems. Mr., um, Mr. Wood, Travis Wood, has worked really hard there at Career Tech Center. Um, the principal and, um, Mrs. Brooks has done a nice job to get that going. Union Hall classroom edition, um, Blair Construct was awarded that contract and the plan to complete, and we are working on getting some property taken care of with that. Uh, Mount Airy HVAC windows comfort system was awarded this project, and then we'll be working through that. Um, construction starting in the evenings and during holidays of the school year. Completion is slated for summer twenty twenty-six. Chatham Elementary and Hurt Elementary HVAC window products also planned. Um, approach should be ready for this board, uh, September board meeting. Hopefully, construction begins summer twenty twenty-six. Final two products for the first three parts and sales tax are the addition of Southside and Stoney Mill Elementary Schools, um, additions, and they are also in design with plans to be completed spring twenty twenty-six within available funding. Union Hall school roof replacement, this project is complete, waiting final inspection. Bus shop roof replacement, that project is complete, um, other than a final inspection. School board office roof replacement is, uh, we're having some weather issues, but we're going to get that worked through. Chatham Elementary sewer connection, this project is about sixty-six, sixty percent complete. Should be completed by the end of July. Kentucky sewer, uh, school, uh, sewer drain, the drain field is in final planning. Not enough space to, um, for the Kentucky side. We're currently looking to move that drain field, um, hoping to bring this to bid very soon. So those are all the construction projects. I don't know if I covered all this. Preferably, Mr. Hudson, if you'd like to insert anything. Um.
Very busy.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of projects going on.
Very busy.
Get some of this stuff back out of the way for us.
Very busy and lots of funds being expended to do this. Why we have to carry stuff over because you, you can't get it done in a year. That's the best way to describe it, Mr. Dawes.
Only thing I'm going to say is Kentucky sewer's been going on for about five years now.
That project I thought was almost finished, and then it wasn't enough space on Kentucky. Now we've moved it over to Danville, but having to go through some re-permitting and phase with the department. It is, planning has gone way too long with that project.
Been a nightmare, hadn't it?
It has. Well, I just, Mr. Hudson, I was just getting to acknowledge you and your staff and everything that you're doing to try to manage all this work. It's a lot to manage. Mr. Dr. Moon's coming on, so hopefully he'll be able to work with you. And Ms. Worley, thank you for keeping the money flowing to get all this completed too. Um, only this other item, I know there was a lot, but safe for you, uh, we have, uh, the tabletop exercise July fifteenth, nine to twelve at Chatham Middle, VSBA Conference in Education, July twenty-fifth, Short Pump, if anyone's interested. And then the VSBA twenty twenty-five Hybrid Legislative Advocacy Conference is September nineteenth at the Chesterfield Career Technical Center. So that's my mouthful, I think. Didn't miss anything. Oh, that's, sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Hancock, you probably found that different. I will.
Can you go ahead and mention them, Ms. Hancock, if you don't mind?
In the, uh, VSBA Showcase for Success in Youth Matter, it's venue county schools, STEM Academy was highlighted. So we provided you all a copy of that article that was included in that publication. So you will see that.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. I appreciate that. That's all my items.
What are the dates for the new employee orientation and the principal?
July thirtieth, February first is going to be the orientation for.
Monday.
Monday, that.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I believe. Gretton Middle School begins at eight o'clock. With lunch, and the big part of orientation will be the first day, which is July thirtieth. That's when we have.
Middle School for that one?
General Middle for that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. No unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Um, the first item is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget summary and carryover funds. Ms. Worley has already gone over all of that. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. Second is the categorical adjustments. Uh, we need to approve that. Do I have a motion to approve that?
A motion?
Second. Any discussion on those? Roll call please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dawes.
Yes. Um, next is a revision of school board policy, JFCB dash PC. Um, we want to waive the first reading and go ahead and approve it today. Um, it's name changes, I believe, is the biggest thing where we've, we've had different people come in.
It's just by title versus name. It doesn't change the content of policy.
Right. And it's just.
It's just.
I have a motion to approve that on, on this reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs.
Yes. Uh, motion to approve the sick leave bank committee?
So move.
Any discussion on the sick leave bank committee? Roll call?
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick. Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs.
Yes. Next is the budget committee membership. Um, I, I, I had not planned to change anything, does anybody, does anybody want to see a change or change anything? I, I will remind you that everybody's always welcome to come, so even though it's a committee, it's always open to the full board, and you're always welcome to discuss it during the meetings. So, anybody have any preferences? Not, I'll leave it as is. Do we need to approve that?
I think you should.
Do I have a motion to approve it then?
Okay. Second.
Um, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs.
Yes. The V S B A honor roll, you know, we, we did that real, you know, back before COVID, we did, did that every year. Things kind of got hectic during COVID, but I would like to, to redo that again, that you, you should have had. But, did y'all see it? Do I have a motion to approve the V S B A media honor roll?
So move.
Second. Any other discussion on it? Roll call?
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Yes. And then the item we added at ten seven is a volunteer invista protocol. Do I have a motion to approve the new protocol?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. May. Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs.
Yes. The, it's not in board docs, the new protocol, if you wish a copy, she's got one, okay? Um, and one final thing, as I would like to say, is next month, we, we'll have a work session, but at three o'clock before the work session, we need to do our COIA training, it's, that's every two years, right, this is a year for that. We're gonna have that training next month at three o'clock here in the boardroom. So make sure you have your laptops, because I think we have to do it on those. Okay, so she'll, she'll put it out, so just, just so everybody know, we're gonna do our COIA training at three o'clock next meeting, is that it? Have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Fitzgerald is absent, Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Merrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Ms. Shields.
Yes.
Mr. Dobbs.
Yes. Did anybody report back on River Street?